Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. I'm sure everybody knows we live in a new world today. We'll be talking about that a little bit here. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here. Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
All right, we're all here. If you can't see us in TV land, we're practicing social distancing. So we got a few people sitting out and about and trying to do what's required of us. I'd like to amend the agenda if I could. I want to move that we add new, under New Business, A Township Emergency relating to COVID-19, and then also under New Business 7, Parks and Rec, it would be under Parks and Rec, the Ralph Wilson Bike Trail Grant.
I'll support.
Okay, we got motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have bills payable. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $208,503.80.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All, roll call.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Sandy Kufal. Yes. Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving right along, the supervisor's report. I've always been starting out with high water. It's been like third or fourth on my mind this week, but I'll give an update on that. The water level's been actually holding steady past since we met last. And the big thing was before this week was the high water bills that, you know, I testified in front of the Senate and the House in support of. It was just this past Wednesday, it was tweaked on the Senate floor and moved to go to the full Senate for passing. And truthfully, I have to fully admit, I have not read what they approved yet. I got busy. But as far as I was told, they tweaked the times, the two-week rule to we can do it, renew it twice, so we can put a temporary no-wake in for a total of six weeks. Then their logic was by then, we could do the Bill 5463, which allows us to do a no-wake for six months. Problem with that rule is that you can only do it one year. You can't, if we have the same issue next year, hopefully we won't, we cannot do it a second time. And it was interesting, while I was there last Wednesday, I was talking to the head of the DNR Enforcement about why can't we do a no-wake law, a permanent no-wake law with triggers, with levels. Say, and these are just levels, I go by the L M A water gauge in the river. It would come on when it hit 578, say, and it would have to maintain that for five days and all of a sudden, you know, we would have a no-wake ordinance in place that would trigger it. And it would maintain that until it went down to, say, 577.10 or .8 or something like that. I'm just spitballing these numbers. And then, you know, maintain for at least five days and then the no-wake rule would cease. This would do a couple things. If we have the problem again, and I'm sure we will 20 years from now or so, the rule would be in place for whoever has to administer it. And what I also did is asked the Corps of Engineers for their recommendation on what levels to make these triggers at. So it would kind of take the politics out of it because everyone's going to have their own opinion on when they should kick in, when they should kick off. But I figured I'd get input, a recommendation from the Corps and to see what they come up with. Anyhow, short story long, sorry. Last year, I attempted to do that. The DNR said, no, we couldn't do it. So I was talking to him Wednesday and he says, you know, I think we might be able to do that. So he did some research and he shot me an email about five days ago and goes, you know, I think we can make that pass. Do a no-wake, permanent no-wake law with triggers set by the level of the water. So anyhow, I haven't received my, the information yet from the Army Corps of Engineers as to what triggers that they would recommend, but that's an option. To do that, you have to have two public hearings to have a local water control. We'd have to hold two public hearings and then also have the DNR to buy in it. And then basically it becomes law after so many days.
Those would be special hearings, right?
Yes. Yeah, special public hearings, so. So I'm working both ways. I do like, if we could do the no-wake law with triggers because, you know, it does take the politics out of it. Okay, everyone knows if it hits this level, boom, there's no way. You know, then we can concentrate on enforcing it in education. You know, that's really the big thing where we do lack, so. All right, let's see. We had, actually had community service last two weekends, filling sandbags. That program has ceased as of today. We do have unfilled sandbags for sale in our office for $18 per hundred. And what else is happening? That's about it. That's, everything else is pretty much, has not changed as far as our water levels that I can think of. Truthfully, it's been like kind of third on my mind as of late. See, I wrote this last Thursday, staying abreast of what's going on with the coronavirus, blah, 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 in communications. Boy, has it changed since then. I wrote this. We're going to talk about it more afterwards. We started working on our Saw Grant project and it's actually worked out great for the timing that we have this, given our sewer interceptor issues that we're having. So a good chunk of our issues, Lisa Engineering, the exploring, the Cameron, all that will be covered under our Saw Grant, so that's nice. Let's see. Been doing actually a lot of work still with the county on the beach park. And we're also looking at, and this is an agenda item, so I'll skip this, about the bike path that goes behind the state park. It's a one-to-one match grant. And we have, it's very time sensitive, so we put it on today's agenda. And let's see, that's about it. I do want to mention that our Parks and Rec programs, all of the events in March have been suspended. Is that right, Cindy?
Right.
And will probably be rescheduling. So that will, I'm sure that's being updated on our Parks and Rec Facebook page. And any questions, give us a call. Pretty short one, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Not bad.
All right. I'm going to catch up later. Super, okay, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yeah, Richard Rapp again. Before I address the board, has anybody done any work with regard to the request I made for the past two meetings?
This past week and a half, no.
Understood.
But if you want to hang out after the meeting, our building inspector's here.
Okay.
Okay, and we can have a five-minute chat.
After the meeting?
Yeah.
How long do your meetings last?
Oh, four hours, five hours. No. Probably before eight o'clock.
All right, then I will withhold.
Okay.
You're talking about off the record, not as an agenda kind of item, just after the meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, any other public comments? Hearing saying none, we're going to move right into the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of minutes, board meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2020, reports, check reports, notice from the cemetery for cleanup publication, communications resignation from N Stewart, and SCC BOC landfill increase, and there are no requests.
Support. Motion to support. Any questions or anything that needs to be pulled out? Our landfill increase is 3%, and so we'll have to reflect that in our next year's budget.
All right, is that countywide?
Yes.
And do we know that other county landfills, they filed suit on that?
I have no idea, but they, ours is unique, like other counties. We're a closed county, so all of our, by statute, all of our garbage has to go to the county landfill. In McComb, they're not a closed, you know, there's private owned landfills, Green Tree, I think it's called, or what's it, Green?
Yeah.
You know, and others there. So, yeah, it's a different animal. It's kind of unique in St. Clair County. But it is going up 3%, so.
Well, just so everybody knows, the SCC BOC, that's the St. Clair County Board of Management.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All that, or everyone approves the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Opposed, thank you, doesn't like it. All right, motion passes. We're all set. Unfinished, New Business. Township emergency relating to COVID-19 virus. And that's all everyone's been talking about for quite a while. Yeah, truthfully, I really don't want to get into the politics, you know, you hear this, that, and everyone has theories, which is good. You know, some people think we're overreacting, not doing, or doing too much, this, that, but numbers say what it is. I mean, I woke up this morning and heard these numbers. For the nation, it wasn't like about five days ago, we had 600 reported infections in the country. Today, we have over 4,000, and who knows, by now, it could be 5,000. So it's reaching widespread very rapidly. I also heard that where Italy, where we are today as a country is where Italy was two weeks ago. And they're in major lockdown and everything else. Now, the last thing I want to do is, you know, have everyone panicking or everything. That's why we're reacting the way we are, so there isn't a reason for a panic in the future. Also today, the President suggested that we have no gatherings of over 10 people. And we do the social distancing like we're doing here tonight and everything else like that. Truthfully, as a township, we have to stay in business. We have to provide continuity for our community. And it would be, the problem is that if some of our people, we get infected and we'll be quarantined and we won't have anyone that can operate our government, you know, our local government. So basically, I wanted to make a motion declaring the township an emergency state dealing with the pan epidemic of the COVID-19 virus and authorizing me to spend not more than $5,000 in dealing with it. That's a motion. I, right now, I can't think of anything we have to, we would have to spend. Maybe on some sanitized stuff and supplies to keep our own people safe. But I don't know what's coming down the road. None of us do, I don't think. And we're just trying to be proactive to stay ahead of them.
Got support.
Got support. Any more discussion on that?
We can come back later if we need more.
Yeah, yeah, we can come back or whatever we have to do. So we have a support declaring a state of emergency in dealing with COVID-19 virus. Any discussion?
That was what, 5,000?
Yeah. I really don't, I'm not sure what we will have to spend if anything, but I just want, you know, I sure hate to have to have a special board meeting or something. Things are moving very fast with this, as we all know. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Yeah, we don't, we can do, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next thing I'd like to do is I'll make a motion that we suspend all Water Department late fees and water shut-offs until further notice.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. There's going to be a lot of people that are going to be financially impacted by this, more so than we know. And
What about the people that are in arrears, if there are any?
Well, we're not going to shut anybody off.
Okay, period.
Period. And eventually, everybody will have to pay eventually, but it might be a couple of months, I don't know. And, you know, we'll be, once it's over with, we'll be making payment arrangements to get people caught up if need be. So I think as a township, we have to be sympathetic going forward and try to help our people out.
So where are we drawing the line? Because we have this month on the 20th, and the water bill is due. So does this month qualify into your
Yep, starting tomorrow. Yep.
Okay.
Immediately.
We have any concern with people that just, that aren't affected by the flu and just don't want to pay?
Well, well, they're going to, eventually they'll have to, you know? Like I would encourage if people can pay and, you know, I'll be paying my water bill regardless. But we want an option of people, everybody knows who's struggling and who's not. Every, you know, if people are struggling, you know, we're going to give them a little bit of forgiveness going forward on this. And like I say, eventually they'll have to catch up and make it whole, but I have a hard time even charging late fees, so. We did this, if you remember, when the federal government had a big shutdown. And we had, we allowed people affected by the US government shutdown to give relief this way. So it's been done before. So that's, we have motion to support. Any more discussion?
Yeah, could I just chime in for a quick second, my little PSA? A lot of people are using wipes and things to clean surfaces, horizontal surfaces, and those things wreak havoc on our filtration system down at the plant. They really do. So if you're wiping horizontal surfaces, you've got disposable, right, things of that nature, throw them out, please. Do not throw them in the toilet. Do not flush them down. It absolutely causes mass chaos and undue stress on the filtration system down at the plant. So please throw them away in your garbage.
Thank you on that. And our wastewater treatment plan is stressed enough.
Correct.
So.
Well, I also like, I think you should mention that even the ones that they claim are flushable
Aren't.
are not flushable.
Right.
So it's all.
Yep.
They get clogged up, right? They clog up our augers.
We have this little rag remover, it's a screen, but it's, I know, heck, I think it costs about $250,000 to put that in there and it's definitely a high maintenance item to keep that clean, so.
Throw them out, please.
Yes. Okay, so we have motion and support for our water, right?
Yes.
You'll have a chance for some more PSA.
Thank you, I got a couple more.
I know you do. So motions, any more discussion on the motion for water relief for shut-offs and no late fees? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, I'd like to, to help lessen the transmital, transmission, I'll say, of this virus, we closed our lobbies, the township office lobbies to public until further notice. Staff is still reporting to work and they'll be here Monday through Thursday, 6:00 or 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. If you have any questions, you can call us at our regular phone number, 794-9303. Regarding any payments, we have the drop box outside. You can use the mail and we have a very good online service where you can pay online. And if you're having problems doing that, or if you need someone to walk you through, call us and we'll walk you through the whole process. We're going to be checking our drop box, you know, several times throughout the day, so don't be worried about it. Our building permits, all our forms are online, right, Cindy?
Right.
And you can download them online, fill them out, you can put those in the drop box. Just about everything we can do, you can do remotely. If by chance you absolutely positively need something, you know, call us, make an appointment. We'll come out to the parking lot and help you as best as we can. And again, we're, same with Oaklong Cemetery's services. You know, we can handle that over the phone. If you call our number, extension 125 gives you DeJanice, or just ask, we'll transfer you to her. You know, you can do everything over the phone or online with that. Garbage pickup is still business as usual. And also to lessen the risk of this disease from spreading, I went around to all the pharmacies in town today, Kroger, CVS, and Rite Aid. And if you, if you, if you're an at-risk person, if you have health issues, underlying health issues, if you're elderly and you got a prescription, if you call them and tell them that Clay Township is going to deliver our, deliver me the prescription, my prescription, call or dispatch and we'll either have the police, fire department, or even the water department for that matter. We'll deliver your prescription to your front door for you and let you know it's there. We're trying to get the message out for at-risk people to, don't put yourself at any more exposure than you can. So this is one thing we're going to be doing and
Could we share that dispatch number?
Yes.
810-794-
9381.
9381.
9381.
9381. Thank you.
And, you know, over the weekend, my phone is blowing up and everything with all the, we have, we have an awesome community. We have a lot of people that want to help through this. Like I said earlier, there's going to be, the impact of this problem going forward on people financially, we don't even know how bad it's going to be with, you know, there's a lot of small businesses and people are going to be suffering through this. And, you know, the kids aren't in school and everything, and it was a big weekend. Oh, the free lunches. I was in contact today with Al Tosa Superintendent and over the weekend. They have, it's like 40 or 50% of the kids in our school are on the free lunch or assisted or reduced lunch. It's incredible. I mean, we're talking about 700 kids are on this program. And I talked to Al today because everyone was worried about them and he's got a plan and he's going to put in place, I'm not sure if they announced it yet or not. I think it's going to start, they did announce it Friday?
Thurs-
They were going to do Wednesday, but you didn't think they would have it
I think they're going to start on Thursday.
Thursday, no, they're going to meet on Thursday and deliveries, delivery will be Friday.
Pickup.
Pickup on Friday.
Starting Thursday and every Tuesday and Friday, beginning the week of the 23rd.
Okay, changed a little bit. Things change quick. Again, if someone has a logistical problem that cannot pick it up, you know, we can, we can deliver it for you if needed. And they were talking about their bus drivers, two might be, be doing some deliveries also. But I was in contact of, with different service groups and everybody wanted to do this and that and this and that and pitch in, which is great, but my fear was we get, because this could be kind of a long haul problem. We don't, I didn't want to have like three or four service groups and churches duplicating services. You know, I come every Halloween, everyone's giving out candy and stuff at every club and everything. I think we need to consolidate our efforts to, so we can help more people in our community and they know where to go to, how and when. So actually, I'm meeting tomorrow with some service groups, community leaders, and we're going to put a plan together that we could help, let's see, I lost my train of thought. Yeah, so we can pull our resources together and help the most people that we can. And we're going to assess what people's needs are and try to fill those needs as we go forward.
Yeah, I have a question, Artie. Don't mean to interrupt your train of thought here, Carson's Island concerned and the people that we have over there that need prescriptions or some help. And the police go over there to deliver it. We have any special thing to do with the ferry as far as assets concerned or anything?
Well, our police and fire are going to, will deliver over there, so. Our police
No cost?
No cost, our police, so.
And let me interrupt too, there's, on that island, there's so many groups, garden club, mothers' clubs, this kind of club that really keep track of needy people.
Right.
And so, and there's a small, communication is not a problem on the island. Everybody knows everything, so. They help each other out too, so.
So what I'm trying to get, we're going to be putting together organized plan with the service groups, the schools, the churches to address our community needs going forward. And we really don't know what those needs are as of yet, and that will be part of it is when issues come to, that we can react. And we're going to try to filter all, anybody has a need for anything, filter all our cars, calls through our non, our dispatch, our non-emergency. What is it, Chris? 794?
9381.
9381. And, because we're there 24/7. And so tomorrow afternoon, or it might be the following day, I'm hoping to have a pretty good concise plan to get together, so so how we can move forward to helping these people that are going to be in need. It could possibly It could possibly be um catastrophic, I wouldn't say catastrophic, but you know, you hate to see people going through uh desperate times when it's no fault of their own, so. We're gonna try as help help as many people as we can going forward. Um, anything else uh on our virus, you got any PSAs or?
Well, um, yeah, I'll just speak real briefly, if I could. Um, I I just wanna implement the the fact that we need to stay calm here.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
This is a, this is a virus, okay? This is not, this is not a all-ending. Um, our at-risk population are certainly our elderly population. They can't cope the same way our younger population or our children can cope. But I saw on online today, uh there was an NBA athlete who happens to have the virus, he's tested positive. He has zero symptoms, no fever, no coughing, no aching, no nothing, zero. But he's positive, so thank goodness he's in self-quarantine, not affecting other people. And that's what we're about here today.
Yep.
That's what we're trying to deliver the message. There are only two reported cases in our county as of today, two. So, that's not a lot, but if we impose these self-restrictions, we're able to slow this monster down. Right?
Yep.
And that's what we're here to do. Um, I did find out that, and probably most of you know that McLaren, McCombe McLaren um is administering uh the drive-through testing. So as of right now, in our area, that's the closest facility that I know.
You you have to have your health provider.
You need to contact your health provider, absolutely. It's just just not a drive-up service, you're gonna have to have some kind of a referral and and your paperwork in order. So I think that the best thing is directed by the governor is to first contact your health provider.
Right.
That's first and foremost. So we're gonna get through this, we're gonna get through this together.
Yeah, and and I'd like to say, you know, it it's a time that we do come together as a community and keep an eye on your neighbors, we've, I've said this many times on different issues. Keep an eye on your neighbors and elderly ones and and uh and and talk to them, keep your distance. Talk to them and uh make sure everything's okay. And if you do find with anybody that has any special needs or something, have us call our dispatch at seven nine four.
Nine three eight one.
Nine three eight one. Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else right now? Cindy?
Watch out for kids, they're running and playing all over.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, the kids, they can be, they can be carriers and.
Well, no, I mean, they're out of school.
Oh, they're out of school, yeah, watch out for kids on the road, yeah.
They're having a fall.
Yeah.
You know, keep keep your eyes open when you're driving.
Yeah, that's true, they're they're out in the street playing. And uh, gosh, I'd I'd hate to be self-quarantined with no sports on TV, I'm sorry. Stay away from me. All right, uh next on the agenda, we have our fire department, new hire, part-time. Uh, we actually have four of them, you wanna do all four at once?
Sure.
Way to go, chief.
I would've had them come tonight, but due to the uh corona de uh virus, I asked them to stay. Uh, they will come when everything settles down and I will introduce them to you guys pretty much. Um, I would like permission to hire four new firefighters. Uh, the first one would be Evan Randall, he's a senior at the high school right now.
Awesome.
Um, he does live in the in Clay Township, he has strong desires to participate in our community and is fire, and fire is his path of choice. Um, do you want me to just go to the next one?
Yep.
Okay, next one is Beau Devroy, presently a firefighter in Fort Grashit. He has firefighter one and currently finished his EMT course, so he's just waiting to get uh clearance to take his tests, which now the schools have closed for a period of time, so that could be a couple, a couple of weeks before he goes and takes his test, but he just just finished. Um, the next candidate is Kevin Lawson, he has firefighter one and re- recently graduated from the academy. Uh, then the fourth one is Trevor Butt, he has uh um completed his EMT course and he is scheduled to go to the academy in McComb in the spring.
Awesome, great.
For firefighter one, firefighter two.
Anyone wanna make a motion? Make a motion to hire all four? Support. Yeah, motion and support.
Guys, all beat me.
And you have have any questions or anything?
Yes, regarding the senior in high school, is he going to, is he enrolled in some classes and stuff?
He is, he is eighteen years old, uh, once he gets out of school, we'll get him into fire one, fire two or EMT, whichever he would prefer to take first. Um, and we're gonna work him on, have him come in and work on the weekends and then holidays, of course, until he gets out of school.
Sounds good.
Chief, for their training programs, firefighter one, two, or EMT that are offered online, or their prep programs for those?
We'll we'll get them prepped for for the for that course here at at the fire station, they'll come in and they'll do some duty shifts, they'll work uh eight hours a day and uh we'll get them prepped to go.
Great.
Awesome, any any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of hiring all four candidates to the uh fire department, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have uh the police department elevate uh higher part-time Trevor, or no, wrong line.
Officer Chadwick.
Uh, yes, Officer Chadwick.
Well, we had a recent opening, uh Officer Chadwick has been with us now since June and uh pretty much, I mean, he is a well-seasoned officer, retired out of Chesterfield and um very well-rounded and uh really don't have to keep an eye on him whatsoever. Um, top shelf as far as uh an officer, that's for sure. And um when this position opened up, he came to me and and expressed his interest in it and no better person to put into the position, so.
Board, I'll make a motion that we elevate to full-time position, Officer Brian Chadwick.
Support. When are we gonna do this, immediately or?
Yeah.
Okay. We have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Hey, Eric, if I could.
Yes, I was gonna say.
Real quick, um, made the decision earlier to um to close our lobby to um citizen interactions um until further notice. Um, pretty much you're seeing this uh with with most departments right now. As everybody else, we're trying to limit the exposure as much as possible to our officers and first responders. Um, you know, with this, it's a different animal than we've ever seen as far as sickness and such. You know, with this, somebody tests positive, they've gotta be quarantined, I mean, we're we're losing them for fourteen days. So we've gotta be so careful with this that we don't have somebody that becomes infected and possibly infects another person. I mean, it could be detrimental to our our public safety, so we're trying to take all necessary steps to make sure that we don't have any um any incidents incidents, uh unnecessary incidents in contact with the public, um, you know, putting any of our officers at any possible risk at this point, so. What we're asking is if if there's any reports that need to be made with our department, we'll still be taking all reports and we will still be running to all emergency runs. Only thing we're asking is things that can be handled over the phone, um, i.e. a a crime that's been committed with no suspects or anything like that. A lot of these things can be handled over the phone. Obviously, if it's something that requires further attention and that, we are gonna come out, we are gonna do whatever needs to be done. But just looking for uh some help with uh from our citizens, uh just to get us through this this time right now. But uh we will still be there, you know, hundred percent capacity, ready to go if the uh if the call should need, so.
What's the number they call, Chris?
Eight one zero seven nine four nine three eight one.
Any encasement emergency?
Nine one one, baby.
You get the gold star today.
Thanks, chief, I need it.
You pass.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, chief, for everything you guys are doing, keep your guys safe out there. All right, next we have a discussion for the property, to adopt the property maintenance code. Um, Gary, wanna come up and get, just give us a quick rundown and what is it, about a hundred and ten page document?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not a thick book at all. It um, it really is widely used in communities all around us. Um, I'm kinda surprised that we don't al- already have this adopted. Uh, the basic mentality of this code is if it's not broke, you don't have to fix it, but it covers a lot of different things that you'll find on a property, uh that if it needs our attention, um, it will help us uh by code section to uh get things corrected.
What uh what brought this on?
Um, because we kinda need it. Uh, what actually brought it on was an incident that we had where there's a a building that the landlord wasn't providing heat in there, they were trying to use temporary heaters that are unsafe to use uh as permanent sources. Um, that is addressed in our codebook, in our property maintenance.
Was that a commercial building or a?
Uh, no, it was a residential, yeah. And so we really didn't have the tools to go and make this uh uh repair mandatory. Uh, those type of things are things that we can find in this property maintenance codebook.
Uh, does it, uh, I didn't, honestly, I didn't read the whole thing, but uh does it have anything to do with uh uh rental certifications for uh?
It can, um, you know, uh, we use this book widely with uh residential properties that are also looking to be certified as a rental property.
I have a separate document for landlords and to how to maintain their property. And I've always thought that where other communities do it, like Elginak and and Chesterfield and some of those other areas, they actually have an inspection come in for the property as deemed fit to rental, to rent.
Yeah.
Or lease.
Yeah.
That 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 will probably something else we'll we'll take up in the uh near future. If you if you remember, Ray, I think it was like two meetings ago, I had my supervisor's report that I was shocked that we had this issue. You know, we can't, we cannot demand someone put heat in your house cause they had a fireplace, you know? And uh, um, yeah, this needs to.
Well, that's that.
Needs to be corrected.
Right, and that's exactly what brought my my statement.
Right, and that and then um and this will correct that, so we 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 have teeth to.
Oh, we should, okay.
To to enforce that, so.
I guess I'll. Here, here, a couple of questions, if I could. Um, one, can you give us a a few examples of some local communities or surrounding communities that have adopted this policy?
Uh, locally here, no, but you know, I I work down in the city uh and all of our communities uh down there utilize this codebook. Uh, and it is primarily used uh with rentals, but our code enforcement officers uh also use this. Uh, and yeah, you know, the the Roseville, the Frazier, the East Point, the St. Clair Shores, uh, all those communities have adopted.
They've adopted, they've adopted this?
Yeah.
Okay, and and how long, is this, is this a, is this a national program?
It is, it is a property maintenance codebook that's used widely across the nation, yes, it is.
Okay.
International Code Con uh Council.
Correct.
As far as your knowledge from being in a in a building official, how long has the IPMC been around or the International Code Council?
The first, um, as long as I've been doing inspections, so we're at about nineteen years, we've had this codebook in place. It upgrades, um, you know, usually every two or three years, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, when need be, but over the years, not a lot of it has changed, but they update it um just occasionally, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Hey, I'll say, once this is instituted, uh, would it be retroactive to some of these buildings that we have?
It it would be, maybe, you know, if we have issues at buildings right now, absolutely, yeah. Uh, this gives us the tool to move forward on on getting those into compliance.
Perfect.
Is this to address rental properties only or all properties?
All properties.
I'll tell you what what I was thinking, uh, I've been thinking about the rental property issue. Um, we have a, um, we've had issues with a few rentals, not all of them. And uh, I I think the, and I I'll probably ask input from Gary on this too eventually, but I know there's a way we can do this where we send out uh a checklist that all rent, you know, is pretty, you know, you have exit signs or this or that and uh, you know, smoke detectors, all all the stuff, and they do a self, a self uh inspection, they check it off. Yeah, oh, my my property has all all the things that are required, they they send it in to us once a year. And of that, we can have our fire department or our billing department for that matter do uh audit and take like fifteen, twenty percent and actually do a uh um, a visit to the house to see if the their self-inspection is actually what what is there in truth.
And then the bottom line to that whole process is they would have to apply for a rental.
Right, right. But that that's the the most painless uh as far as administration and uh and 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 as far as what we'd have to charge for that fee too, to uh um go forward, so. Uh, have you seen something like that before, Gary, or?
Oh, a registration process?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I I do those all the time, uh virtually every day, we do rental inspections. And uh, yeah, there's a registration process, uh, yeah, there was a fee, usually these registrations are good for two or three years.
Right.
Um, so, but yeah, then we go out there and and we do an inspection and primarily those are designed to look at the safety issues.
Right.
You know, making sure that you got a furnace that's working right, uh making sure you got smoke detectors, making sure that you got guardrails that are in good shape.
No electrical issues.
GFIs.
What's that?
GFIs, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so anyhow, we we have uh the the question on the adopting the property maintenance code right now. Uh, we don't have a motion yet, do we?
No, can I just get, yeah, we can get a couple of questions afterwards.
Yeah, let's let's make a motion and we'll open it up.
Okay.
Anyone, I'll entertain a motion or?
Motion for discussion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for discussion of the property.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, so we have motion and support, all in favor of uh discussion of the property maintenance code, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? Okay, let's talk more about it.
All right.
Gotta do.
This this appears to me like it it is giving um additional reach and authority to govern residential and commercial properties? Okay, so specifically, whose reach and whose authority, does that come, is that an onus on the Clay Township? Or is that on our building official? How exactly does the power transfer once we adopt this?
Well, it does, it does transfer to us, uh, the inspectors out there in the field.
Us meaning the building official?
Yes.
You specifically?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we also have, though, our code enforcement officer that will be going around if we have any issues that need to be addressed, um, you know, they can also look at it. The actual codebook um doesn't have to be a state-certified uh inspector to do these types of inspections. Uh, of course, you've gotta have the knowledge of of it, but you don't have to be certified by the state. So that job could be done by uh virtually uh anyone. Uh, yes, without a doubt, it falls underneath uh my heading as a billing official uh to take this as far as we need to or uh to dial it in or to just keep it to if it's not broke, you don't have to fix it mentality, which I think is an excellent way to look at it. Uh, of course, when we talk about rental properties, uh we wanna make sure that the safety features that are in this book uh is something that we can address and enforce. And right now, we don't necessarily have that uh authority to do so.
Thank you. I hope to clear some things up.
So the code enforcer or anybody else that that obviously they have some type of formal training, but they're in the position anyways because they could probably walk in there and do it without training, uh, cause that's why we hired them. And uh I know we do, uh, being in the real estate end of it, we do uh order inspections, private inspections for the for the uh the buyer, basically.
Mm-hmm.
And uh they they cover all of that stuff during the process of a transfer of property, so. I don't see this being any different other than the fact that it's gonna be a real simple inspection, not that deep as a uh home inspector would do it.
You're absolutely correct, yeah.
I was just worried about, gives us a little too much power, uh, we can go in, I don't like the color of your kitchen counter, you know, change it.
Yeah, they.
Type thing, but.
Yeah.
The the checkoff list is is fine, electrical safety, walk in there, you got, you know, like like an FHA appraiser or a VA appraiser would come in and they turn the hot water on, make sure you got a hot water, ma- make sure the heat's running, make sure the air conditioner's running and make sure you got GFIs around it within the arm length of the ki- and make sure you got GFIs around it within arm length of the kitchen sink.
And just a poor example, you know, you got a roof, for a poor example, that's looking a little ragged, but it's not emitting rain. Well, this book doesn't say that you have to replace that roof because it's getting aged. If it's leaking, yes, you have to fix the leak, but you don't have to replace the entire roof. So, it's not, it's not, you know, so, so strict that there isn't leniency in all of that. If you got a leak, fix the leak. You know, if your faucet's dripping, fix the drip. Doesn't say that, well, it's an old faucet, so you have to replace the old faucet. It's mainly, you know, what's broke, you fix. But, but to what extent? And this book kind of, kind of lets you know how far that you go with it, and basically doesn't address much more than what's broken. Fix what's broken and things are good.
So currently, do we have an idea of how many rental properties we have in Clay Township?
I do not.
No, you do not know. See, there we go, because it's unregulated. Okay.
No idea.
And I'd say the registration process can correct that, the homestead can correct that. Any homes with zero percent homestead usually is giving you the indicator. Most ordinances that are addressed, that address rental properties, it's basically called a non-owner occupied house, that if you own it, but you don't occupy it, it falls up underneath that potential ordinance to be a rental property. So, whether or not you charge for someone to live there or not, if you're the owner and you don't live there, you know, then, then you'd have to have a registration process. And at least that would then give you an idea of how many rentals that you have. And then however you wanted to police that, whether it would be, you know, self inspections or have us go out there and do inspections or do a periodic, that would be up to the board's decision on how far you want to take it. But to look at zero percent homestead will give you a good indicator as far as who has a property, but they can't claim. And I know we have a lot of cabins in Clay Township, so, you know, that might be a little foggy number as to, well, whenever it is occupied, it's occupied by the owner, but the homestead exemption is what we generally use to determine whether or not. And then further discussion could decide whether or not, yeah, it's a cabin, it's a secondary or whatever, and not a bona fide rental property, which, you know, generally your renters aren't going to keep up the property like an owner occupant would. So, this kind of helps add along to make sure that the properties that we have here and maybe right next to, you know, where you live are being held up to, at least, you know, let's make them clean and safe and sanitary, you know?
What we're seeing too is a lot more of those Airbnbs too popping up.
So, this is like a safety or even a resource guide for you, right?
Yes.
Building official. So, I have a two-part question. One, how did this get in front of us, the board today? And two, how strongly are your convictions that we adopt this tonight?
I love this book, it's a great tool for us, for sure. And really, what, what came about was when we had this house that didn't have proper heating. And I go, it's right in the property maintenance book, only to find out we didn't have a property maintenance book. So, then it becomes more difficult to enforce, and this makes that sort of thing very easy to do. You know, if you got a dilapidated, you know, emergency escape, who we're dealing with too. And they just let it go into disrepair, and we don't have a safe way for people to get out of, out of their apartments or wherever, this book here addresses that, and it streamlines it, it makes it easy for us to get enforcement on it. Because this is primarily existing properties, it's not new construction, which we deal a lot with, you know, when we're going out there doing inspections. This is existing properties that, and this is a great tool to help us keep them, you know, safe.
Just down here for a discussion, we actually have to have a ordinance to adopt that book, which we don't have tonight. So, it's just to get people talking and thinking. I wasn't sure if it was a rental or if it was for all homes. I'm probably not opposed to a rental. I am kind of opposed if it's more than that, so I'll do some more research. You know, I mean, I don't like to micromanage people's property and their homes, setbacks, you know, what else they got going on.
Well, let me just say that I, in Clay Township specifically, I quit doing rentals for clients to rent their homes out. I go in there and we're, as a, as a real estate agent, and we are going to hire or recruit a, an occupant for that home, we do a checklist ourselves, okay? And the many times that I have to turn the checklist in and come back and talk to the, or they've contacted me, and none of that stuff has been done. So, they're living in there in a haphazard condition.
Right, that's why I said, I'm not opposed to it for rentals. It would take some more research and convincing to go beyond that, me right now.
Problem is, though, this would help us for heavily blighted homes too. Am I right, Gary?
Yes, absolutely. And like I say, we wouldn't be going out with our book and going from one house to another and say, okay, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong.
Got to fix your eaves trough.
Yeah, I mean, that's not what really is designed for, nor would I be wanting to go down that path at all.
Right.
And yes, Cindy, it is big for rental properties, absolutely. But even so, you know, there's other situations that may be a safety issue for even yourself or, or a neighbor. It doesn't, you know, it kind of doesn't differentiate between one or another, but I can assure you that this book is not meant to go door to door or flip page to page, you know, looking to see what we can find wrong with properties, that's not the idea. And even when we're doing these in rentals, it's primarily looking at safety issues. Let's make sure that things are safe. Make sure that things are sanitary, you know, and that's just to help increase our values and, and values of properties around us.
Well, it also helps the owner for any liability down the line. Had to put that in there.
I'll just finish up my thoughts. I feel like we've hired a really good building official. I feel like we've had a lot of challenges in our building department, right? This is a tool that he's asking for, and I'm inclined right now, as he's asking for this, to give him the resources he needs to do the job we've asked him to do.
I agree.
So, that, those are my initial thoughts. I'd like to get a little more reading on this, certainly see the, the rental versus property owner perspective. And like anything else, if we chose to adopt this and it was being pleased in a way that we didn't feel was effective or needed to be pleased, we could just opt out of it, couldn't we?
Well, we can, we can change it, we can administrate. This, this will be in addition to our regular zoning court. This is a separate ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
It's not going to be a part of it, right?
It wouldn't fall under 126, then?
Right, right. So, so I, I think I would move that we would address this at our next business meeting as a possible ordinance that we adopt.
Support.
Motion of support. Any discussion on talking about as a possible ordinance for our next business meeting? Hearing none, all in favor?
What would that be?
Our, what, first Monday of?
It's about three weeks.
April 6th.
April 6th.
So, if we have a special meeting between now and then, can we pull that in?
Sure. Sure.
You're going to write and type up the ordinance, yeah?
Yeah, we got, we got to do a little bit of paperwork. We got to do a little paperwork, but yeah.
Throwing your name in the ad lurch?
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion that we hear this as a possible ordinance at our next business meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
We're going to need a public hearing on that too, right?
I don't think we, do we need a public hearing on that? I don't know, I'll check. It's been a while.
I wouldn't think so.
No. Next, we added, Ralph Wilson is a big, big, huge foundation, and they've been putting a lot of money in grants and awards in southeast Michigan. Anyhow, this came up quick. In fact, there was a meeting I was supposed to be at nine thirty this morning, but that meeting got canceled, and it was a conference call, and I was actually too busy to be on the conference call, so I asked Cindy Babish to, to get in on it. And what it is, there's a grant under the Ralph Wilson Foundation. It's got to be at least fifty thousand, but not over four hundred thousand, to manage and do maintenance on existing bike trails. We have the bike trail that goes from, well, through Elginak from Michigan Street, all the way to Robert's Landing through the DNR property behind the state park. Very well-used, and it is in need of a resurfacing. In fact, the county Parks and Rec did a little audit on the trails, and ours failed.
That was in our form reports, if you may.
Was it, yeah, yeah, it was in our, right, it failed. And this, this grant is a one-to-one match. In other words, we spend a dollar, they match it a dollar. I don't have any cost on what it would take to resurface that, but we have the county, what it is, I'm sure we don't have enough, or we wouldn't make the fifty thousand dollar bar as far as the minimum. So, what we're doing, we're doing probably one, two, three, six or seven grants countywide, and they're going to put ours with the other ones, from Fort Grashit, Marysville, Port here in St. Clair. I think that's it, maybe one or two others, I'm not sure. And compile it into one grant, so we can take advantage of it. Like I say, and it will pay for amenities too, benches, whatever we want to do, if we want to do lighting or whatever. I don't have a cost on it yet. I was going to get a whole project engineering to give us an estimate on repaving what is eight foot wide, it's two point two miles long. And as you might be aware of, during the high water, from the bridge that goes over the Rain City Drain going this way, it was underwater a good foot for about a hundred yards. And I was going to suggest that we actually do a platform, like a dock or something over that, so we're out of the water, it'd be cheaper than building up with stone and building the whole trail up. When I lived in Alaska, I saw that quite a bit on their, on their trail system. So, what we need to do, because we have to get all this information back to the county in a week, is that right, Cindy?
It's a two-week deadline, but by Monday, Tuesday next week, they want their info.
Yeah, and part of it is we need the board's commitment financially to do what we need to do. I don't know what that is yet. Like I say, this is, you know, it's moving fast, but I would really entertain a motion that we wouldn't spend more than twenty thousand dollars on this project. And like I say, it needs to be done, and we get a one-to-one match for the grant.
Are you making that one?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we make a commitment not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the Wilson, Ralph Wilson Foundation grant for main, trail maintenance.
Support. Are Parks and Rec funds?
Uh, yes.
I'll support that.
Okay, we got motion of support. Any more discussion? Because this has to be actually, the whole grant thing popped up real quick, and.
Really unique opportunity.
Yeah.
And we had some extraordinary damage during the high waters on that trail, and it was an older trail to begin with, so.
Yeah, it was the first one, the first ones in the county, so.
You're a problem.
Do we have, do we have funds available for, in our Parks and Rec budget to deal with things like this?
Probably be next year's funds.
Is this coming out of general?
It would come out of Parks and Rec, but generally, if we don't, general might have to loan it to Parks and Rec or transfer it to cover it. This wouldn't be till next year's budget, but, which actually I've started working on.
The match can be also going to be in kind, so.
Okay, did you hear that? I wasn't aware of that, the match can be in kind services. So.
This portion of the trail is all Clay Township property?
Yeah, and it's unclear, because a lot of it's under, on the state park, DNR property, and I'm not sure if we're financially responsible for that section or not. That's why I'm doing it loose, and I'm not, there's a lot of unknowns. I hate spending money and coming to you with a lot of unknowns.
So, this goes up to Robert's Road or?
Yes, yes. And there's a chunk of it in Elginak too. From Michigan Street to the drain is Elginak. So.
Do we know if they're on board?
You know, I did talk to them last week, and they said that they were. I, was Elginak on their call, do you know?
I didn't hear Denise on the call.
Okay.
But I know they were on board.
Yeah, I talked to them last week, they said they're, they're on board.
That portion of Elginak, that road was completely closed last year for majority of summer.
Right.
The road is where the trail is shut down.
From Michigan to the bridge?
Yeah. So, and as, I use that trail, it's heavily used, you know, all our residents, so.
You've got a unique situation too, where there's a lot of partnering going on in the county, all these different agencies, and that's going to benefit us, you know, join into that.
Part of the bridge debate.
For a one-to-one match, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, it's fifty percent off.
Right.
Right, and there's lots of ways to look at it.
Yep. So, it's ours, we should maintain it properly. There's some places that definitely are not safe. There's holes from muskrats undermining it, a spot where roots from a tree kind of buckled it, and there's big cracks and stuff. I think we had, I had it rubber sealed about three years ago. And that helped out, but it definitely needs to be addressed, so. So, we have a motion for twenty, up to a twenty thousand dollar commitment for this Ralph Wilson Trail Maintenance Grant. And we have support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, you want to take it away, Cindy?
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
I'm going to go yes on this.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, board member comments. Cindy, you have any board member comments?
Oh, should have stayed up there. Just tell everybody to eat right, sleep right, and stay up there.
Yeah.
Wash your hands.
Wash your hands. Mark?
Go hold up the coffee.
We have some events coming up that have, some of them have been canceled and some of them haven't, so we're kind of like waiting in the, in the wings to see if they do have, cancel. I know we got one on the twenty-first that we're supposed to go to.
I can't hear you, I can't hear.
Well, now that I have new ears, I can, not yelling like I used to, but. But we have one on the twenty-first of March. Has that been canceled yet?
The state of the county?
Yeah.
I, yeah.
Yes.
I'm sure it's canceled.
I haven't seen anything but being canceled or not, so. All right, that's all I have for now, but thank everybody for especially the building official there.
Just step up to the podium if you want.
The only thing that I have to say is that the island is awful quiet, because everything's closed up, the bar's closed up, won't be open till weekends, you know, there, it's like a ghost town, because it's, because of this. Number nineteen.
Mike's going, no, no way.
Well, that's well-known over there. So that's about it, but we, we'll manage, we're very survival-minded.
Sandy?
Um, I did want to thank the citizens of Clay Township for helping us execute what I think was a very successful election last week.
Yeah.
And I wanted to, uh, thank the township clerk for doing a fabulous job, getting everything organized and making sure everyone was efficiently brought through the polls. It was a very long day for everybody, and I just want to thank everyone that helped work and came out to vote.
Thank you.
Boy, doesn't that seem a long time ago?
It does. It seems like it was at least three meetings ago.
Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, Chief, thanks for being proactive, keeping that fire hall supported with the right personnel. So I like the influx of younger people as well. Just be, uh, be diligent in what we do. Be careful, be smart, but be calm. Okay, there's only two cases in the whole county. Be calm. Be kind, okay?
It's a good, good practice for when we get that flesh-eating virus. Where we, we won't be the walking zombies, right?
That's come from your supervisor.
Yeah, right.
Not trust you, O'Regan.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, leave a couple rolls for the rest of us.
We're, we're gonna get through this together.
Yep, I, I'd like to, to mention too, it, it really, I mean, we joke and stuff, but it's, it's time to come together as a community. And it, it will financially impact a lot of people. Um, let's support our, our local businesses, and, and there, there's a lot of people struggling, um, and will be struggling. And, uh, you know, like the Walmarts and, uh, a, all the big box stores, you know, they, they got the resources to weather through the storm, but our mom and pop shops really don't have the, as much resources. And I know there's some parts, some things coming down the line to help, help people out and stuff, but it's gonna be trying times. And, uh, you know, I, I've always been a firm believer of buy local and, and, um, it's, it's time we, uh, we do that. And it's gonna bring us, like Chris said earlier, it, it's gonna bring us back to a simpler time too, I think. Uh, where, you know, hey, we might be getting along, we're together with family events more, playing board games and going on walks. It's beautiful outside, right? Go for a walk on our, our dilapidated bike trail. That we will soon fix, so.
Are those your comments?
Those are my comments. Not Chris, oh, Chrissy, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, anyone that has any questions, this, this is unprecedented, uncharted waters with closing the offices, so, you know, we're, we're changing by the minute to try to accommodate people. So if you have any questions or concerns, if you need help with payments or payment arrangements, any questions, call. But be patient, because we're, we're trying to work through it, so, you know, there's no need to, to be hostile when you call.
Point well taken. Any questions, give our offices a call. Yep, exactly, so. Alright, other than that, let's get out of here.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, thanks everybody, thanks for coming.